Good, great. Hi, good evening, everyone. Let me call to order the regular meeting of the Brookfield Board of Education. This is Wednesday, March 20th, and it is 7:00 PM. So, before we get started, let's all rise and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we'll move to roll call all members of the Board of President. Nice to see everybody. Hi, Ava, and here's the executive team. Thanks for being here this evening. Before we move to Ava's student representative report, I just want to say for the people who are assembled here that tonight is, tonight's process is a little unusual. It's the province of the Board Chair to set the, I guess, the terms of the meeting. And given the recent spate of personal violent, sorry, that's okay, threatening attacks to members of our community, members of this Board, members of our administration, it was the recommendation of the Chief of Police that we suspend televising our meetings until things cool off. And hopefully, the perpetrators of the bomb threats will be found very soon and brought to justice, which they deserve. But until that time, while there's a threat, and we would do the same for any members of the public here, you know, these people deserve to be protected from whatever lunatic elements are out there. And so, this is one small step that we can take to kind of dim the fire of that vitriol. So, that's why. And we will be meeting as a Board, maybe in the next meeting, to have a discussion about whether this is something we want to continue, the suspension, or whether we want to revert back to regular practice. And I think we should do that in consultation with the police. But, anyway, I just wanted to say that here for everyone, and thank you very much for being here this evening. So with that, let's move to Ava.
Hi, I hope you guys are all doing well tonight. It's only been two weeks since the last meeting, so I don't have that many updates. Some events that just happened recently, the school play Mama Mia was this past weekend, it was incredible. And yesterday, juniors took the SAT. Coming up, 11 graders are also taking the NGSS National Science Assessment next week, and the career fair is also on, coming up next week. Junior prom tickets are on sale now, and senior prom is also coming up in May. For athletics, so last time I talked about the cards of appreciation that Mr. Baldwin gives to our officials. I have some, I'll pass them down. I'll take one of them, so I can read to you what's on the back. So these go to officials, and like I shared last time, Mr. Baldwin does this because he feels like it's nice to give thanks for the people who don't really receive it as often as they should. So it says, "Thank you for enabling our student athletes to play the game that they love." Why, every athlete and parent should say thanks. Since most people don't think very long about the lifestyle and expectations we have for sports officials, it might be important to break down a few of the more important details that may prompt you to offer thanks to the next official you see. It can be a thankless job. It's rare that sports officials are thanked for hustling and calling a great game, yet they are almost always blamed when they make a human mistake. When officials do their jobs well, their work is almost invisible, and therefore, few people take time out to recognize the efforts it took to do things like hustle, diffuse potential conflicts, and display fairness to both teams. They receive little, if any, support. When we watch a game, there are fans of both individuals and teams competing, but the official is out there alone. Unlike players who support each other when dealing with tough situations, the official is left to him or herself when trying to regroup after a bad call, miscall, or angry athlete or fan. They are often overblamed. Athletes, coaches, and sports parents sometimes erroneously blame the official for bad calls on the field, or scapegoat the official when in fact, the official had nothing to do with the outcome of the game. They receive little, if any, pay. Only a very small percentage of sports officials make enough money to live on, and the overwhelmingly vast majority of sports officials make very little or no money at all. They are constantly hustling. While players get to take breaks by coming in and out of games, officials are required to perform every play and often expected to hustle to get into the right positions to make fair calls. Thank you from the Brookfield Athletes, Coaches, and Administration. So like I said, after he went to a national conference, this idea has kind of caught on in other schools across the country, and overall, it's just a really great way to give thanks for our officials and refs. Going along with athletics, I have some individual updates. Ice hockey, the co-op team with Brookfield, Damaran Immaculate, unfortunately, lost in their state finals, but they had a great, successful season, being SWC champions, and it was the first time they even went to the state finals since 2011. Varsity Cheer went to regionals for the first time, and they placed third, which is an incredible accomplishment. Spring tryouts have started for all spring sports, and the tennis courts were being redone, but they're starting to resurface this week. For athletic advisory, those students are working on a parent video to kind of streamline Parent Night, which is an event where parents can learn more about the Brookfield Athletics Program. And they're also working on videos about parent behavior, and they're doing a survey about parent sportsmanship. Along with that, athletic advisory is working on a project called Portrait of a Student-Athlete and Portrait of a Student-Athlete Parent, kind of just giving an example of a model student athlete, student athlete parent. Finally, for the clubs I'm in, I only really have some updates about Brookfield Youth Commission, because we're organizing the career fair that's happening this upcoming week. Signups were done by ILT teachers rather than individual students themselves, and it was all on a first-come, first-served basis, so juniors and seniors got first pick when they were signing up. Signups are around 92% done, which is a lot better than last year, and we were using a system that's a lot easier than what we did last year, too. The presenters are pretty much finalized. Of course, there's always some last-minute dropouts, or things that have to get switched around, but we have some backups that are going in, in place of those. And during the school day, it's a modified schedule where the three 30-minute slots are fit into the day, and all the rest of the blocks are shortened. And that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ava.
Anybody have questions for Ava? Awesome, thank you.
Have a good night, Ava, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move to public comment, and it has been brought to my attention that we do have an item, we do have the Security Task Force Committee membership, so some of our speakers are signed up to speak on topics connected to that. So you guys will be able to go earlier, rather than at the end. Okay, so before, before public comment, let me just issue this reminder. The Board of Education welcomes public comment. Each speaker shall have up to three minutes to provide input to the Board. At the start of each regular meeting, a maximum of 20 minutes is allotted for comment on any item included on the agenda for that meeting. At the end of the regular meeting, time is allotted for comment on any item which is within the Board's jurisdiction, which is, will also include overflow time, but I don't think we'll get there with this number of folks. Discussion of school personnel, individual students, or of individual members of the Board is prohibited. And with that, I would like to invite up Owen and Kaylee Clarkson.
Hello. Hello, my name is Owen Clarkson, and I live on 48 Mountain View Drive.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Clarkson, and I also live at 48 Mountain View Drive.
The recent threats to our school made us feel unsafe and alone.
We like school and want to feel safe there.
My principal, Mr. Randa, helped me feel safe at school by introducing me to the Guidance Counselor and Officer Flynn. He taught to me and told me that his number-one goal is for the students to feel safe at Whiskin Air.
I think this should be the Superintendent and Board of Education's number-one goal, too. The students should feel safe in Brookfield Schools. There are some easy changes we can make to increase safety and help students feel comfortable
Number one, all teachers and staff members should wear visible ID badges. This will help students easily identify who should be in our school and who should not.
Number two, a school resource officer or security guard should be outside with us when we need, when we have recess. This will help teachers look for dangers and keep us safe.
Teacher, teachers, teachers, teachers should teach students more about See Something, See Something program from Sandy Hook Promise. This way, we can look for warning signs and signals.
These ideas do not cost a lot and can help increase safety in our schools. We want to thank the Board for listening to us and our ideas.
And we want to thank you guys. So next, Casey Clarkson.
Good evening, Casey Clarkson, 48 Mountain View Drive. The recent turmoil in our community and threats to Brookfield Public Schools are concerning. It's interesting that although tonight's meeting is being videotaped, it will not be posted on YouTube, in order to protect the Board and the community members speaking during the public comment section. My question is, what are you protecting us from? Are the recent threats that concerning that they warrant this protection? We've been told by the Superintendent that the threats are just hoaxes and examples of spamming. In fact, we are no longer going to be notified as parents about them, because they are nothing to be concerned about. So I ask again, why is this recorded meeting not being shared on YouTube for the public to see? It appears it's just another incident of the lack of transparency currently in our district. In recent days, both my husband and I have reached out to the Superintendent regarding the threats against our children in school. His responses have been dismissive, aloof, and stock in nature.
Mrs. Clarkson, I'm sorry, point of order, you're not allowed to talk about individual members. Please talk generally about the administrators or leadership.
Okay, I'd like to encourage the Brookfield Teachers Union to survey the staff and see how many of them feel secure and safe in our buildings. I'd also like the Board to survey parents and see how many of them are concerned about the safety of students, versus how many of them just don't want to hear about it, as we've been told. I have formally requested in writing to be notified when my students, when my own children, are being threatened in school, whether it's a direct threat or indirect, and that has just been ignored and passed aside. As the Board, I'd like you to review the actions of the Superintendent in recent weeks, and consider asking him to step down. Thank you.
Mrs. Case, I believe that your item is off agenda. It's hard to read, okay, thank you. So, oh, I'm sorry, Jeremy, I apologize, I skipped you. Jeremy Farrell, please.
Hello, Jeremy Farrell, 13 South Lake Shore Drive. It has been a very scary few weeks for our community, and I think it is worth noting that we are not in danger of bad things happen. Bad things have happened. Students have seen these threats and have had to deal with the trauma of seeing them. Students have had to deal with the trauma of these threats taking place. And with all that said, apologize, I'm a little more off the cuff tonight, I just want to say, I just want to say nothing but love and support to every single member on the Board of Education, and every single parent and school personnel who is here, or not here tonight. I think it is an impossible situation to deal with, and I do not think anything but love and support should be shown to those who are dealing with it. I would also like to take a second to, as I think many of us should, take some responsibility. While I think there's been many choices that have been made, that not everybody agrees with on every side of the issue, that people who agree with them have made, personally, I feel I contribute to talking past people, to thinking, if I come up here and just say all the right, perfect words, everybody's going to understand my point, and then it'll all be sorted out. That's not going to happen, and has clearly left our schools feeling less safe because of it. We need to have difficult conversations, and I think that we officially need to have them and cannot wait any longer. So I want to say, I want to have those conversations, with those on the Board, with anybody else here. When it comes to conversations about why this has been called a book banning, when it comes to conversations about if we should look at a book in its full context when we ban it, when it comes to questions about if sex education should be taught in school...
Mr. Farrell, please keep it to safety.
Oh, sorry. These are conversations that I think we need to have, and we need to make sure we have them with each other, even if they're difficult, even if they're not fun, because when they don't, the tensions just go up, and up, and up, and that's how I think we end up here. And nobody in Brookfield deserves to be here right now, having to deal with this type of fear. And I am so sorry for every single member who does, and I hope my love and support goes out to all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Scolera.
Erin Scolera, 5 Jackson Drive. I'm here this evening to ask that the minutes from the January 3rd meeting be amended to reflect the accurate transfer that took place. You reported a temporary transfer from paraprofessional to long-term sped substitute WMS effective 1/8/2024 to 4/1/24, which should have been reported, literacy para to long-term case manager WMS effective 12/23/23, when the email was sent by the principal. With that being said, upon further digging, the transfer happened at the building level and never should have happened. A person was transferred to acting in the capacity of a special education case manager with zero special education training. Before this inappropriate transfer took place, I made a complaint about the individual's behavior and interaction over weeks with my identified student, with discriminatory and blatantly shaming him for his areas of struggle. I was told at that point that that person did not have any special education training for my child's area of disability, nor were they privy to his, to their IEP. A mere three months later, they're now miraculously capable of acting as a case manager. By making this decision, the district has now in turn put every child on that caseload without...
Mrs. Scolera, you need to keep it about the, making the minutes accurate, and you're also talking about school personnel.
But it's, I'm not naming the school personnel. It's, I mean, it's in the minutes. You wrote what it was in the minutes. The fact of the matter is, you have, what I'm saying is exactly what you have referenced in the minutes.
And we are interested in making your correction, but you are, you are referencing specific individuals.
Okay, so I can't talk about the individual that you have on the agenda listed as a transfer, and why they were transferred, but the Board can talk about students in, in a meeting? It doesn't make sense. I mean, the fact of the matter is, this is exactly what this transfer is. It's inaccurate.
We, we would like your notes, we would like to make them accurate.
Okay, so then I'll get up at the end and speak about exactly what needs to be said. The fact of the matter is, this was simply robbing Peter to pay Paul. You have children that are not being serviced in this district right now, because you took someone out of a position, leaving students unable to have somebody for support legally required. And it's not okay. My student hasn't had support for two and a half months. You have a crack review that outlined numerous problems in this district, missteps, and they're still happening. On a plus side, you have a special education director trying to make it better, and he can't be expected to do it alone. You have people that aren't running PPTs, we have to have him present. When is enough enough? Legal services are already over budget. We have lack of transparency, delivery of services, or appropriate services. They're driving your budget higher. Legal bills, complaints, mediation, due process hearings, outside testing, and outplacements will happen when these mistakes continue to happen. I would simply ask the Board, how many outplacements can you realistically afford? I urge the Board and the Administration to look into this matter, and numerous other transfers that should not have taken place, because our children are worth it.
Thank you, Mrs. Scolera. And now we have Mr. Korea about the Finance Committee Agenda.
Andy Korea, 45 West Whiskin Air Road. I'm going to speak about the Finance Minutes, as well as transparency around it, and general transparency, which has been referenced in the agenda here. So I'm asking the Board to update the Finance Subcommittee Minutes to include the fact that check, that the check registers aren't there, and in the meeting, there was public comment asking for those documents. They were being used to conduct a meeting, and their decisions were being made on them. However, that person attending the meeting was denied access, and stated that it was an FOIA request. That is a violation of the Freedom of Information Act. Those checks had already been written and cleared, they are at record, and they need to be provided. In general, I'm concerned about transparency, including not broadcasting this meeting. You know what the meeting agenda is, there aren't hot topics on here, right? And the person that's giving you the advice, right, is the same Chief of Police that didn't help supervise the SRO that was trading nude photos. And we're taking his advice, you know? The BOE has blocked and curtailed public comment, as we just noticed here, lack of transparency, right? We had a Board of Ed member go off-topic and discuss a student at a book challenge meeting, then a letter-writing campaign.
Mr. Korea, this is meant to be about Finance Committee Minutes.
This is about transparency. How come we cannot provide transparency and sticking to the rules?
With that, sir, you are not meant to go off of what you say that you're talking about, which is Finance Committee Agenda. Yes, Finance Committee Agenda.
So on the agenda was a discussion of whether we videotaped this, whether we broadcast this meeting, yes?
No.
Did you speak about it?
I did.
Then it was on the agenda.
No, actually, it's not. But we would like for...
The purpose of speaking about things on the agenda are to discuss things the Board are going to talk about, you talked about...
Mr. Korea, listen, we will, we will get you the answers that you want about the check registers and making documents...
Each time I wrote to the Board, I got a received response. You have not cured the times that you lied in a Board meeting, that you lied in a Board of F, Board of Finance and Board of Selective Meeting. Like, so this is the only opportunity, and the fact that you're curtailing sending this to YouTube is a lack of transparency that allows a majority to decide what they want to do, when they want to do it, including having a lawyer that actively discriminated against children. It took about three to five parents last year to get that crack review. We shamed the Board into doing it, right? If these meetings are not broadcast, then there's going to be more problems within the district, because a group of people trying to manage their appearance versus manage the district is, is in front of following the law and doing what's right for children, whether they're your children or not, whether you agree with the book or don't agree with the book. Your personal agendas of, you know, people at this table, as well as former members of the Board, that just don't want to deal with the facts. That's what we're trying to bring up when we come up here and speak every week.
Thank you for your comments. So that concludes public comment for the agenda items. We'll move now to written correspondence.
The Board has received written correspondence on several topics since its meeting on March 6th. Jessica Hansen regarding March 20th meeting, Trina Capone regarding policy review, Ruth DeGuglia and Alyssa Koenig regarding their BHS ASL class, Michelle Cornielison and Lisa Koenig with a request for ASL 2, Juan Alcoker regarding public comment, and non-resident Todd Peterson regarding policy review. The Board of Education received emails from the following people regarding the Board's discussion and decision made at the February 27th special meeting. Andy Korea, Irene Korea, Susan Iverson, Courtney Madison, Lisa Temple, Erin and David Sweet, Elizabeth and David Ray, Gabriela DePinto, Gillian Beswick, Heather Buckley, Julie Oakley, Zoe DePinto, Jeremy Farrell, Deborah Cacase, Andrea DiStefan, Erin Zimmer, Said Quisser, Allison DePinto, Michelle French, Sarah Coffey, and the Connecticut Youth Political Advocacy Council. The Board of Education received emails from the following people regarding the threat to our schools, BOE, members of our administration, Superintendent and community, and the communication email sent on Friday, March 8th. Holly Carl, Jean Hartnett, Jennifer Ackerly, Ellen O'Donnell, Barbara Moore, Nahid Quisser, Mary Capiello, Brian McGovern, Masarot Quisser, Sue Slater, Joe Herr Quisser, Michelle Sands, Carrie Colombo, Paige Jimenez, Denise Noto, Francisco Sinta, Giovanni Sinta, Sofia Sinta, Casey Clarkson, Jessica Hansen, David Franklin, Laura Orban, Amy Foster, Joanne Cafiero, Artie Pilson, former resident, Kathy Van Duzee, Joseph San Giorgi, Ann Gardner, Mike and Erin Lucia, Gillian Veras, sorry, Veras Stroh, Ruben Wind, Colleen DiStefan, Monica McInerney, and Elizabeth Bright. Apologize for the names, I messed up.
Okay, so we'll move to item seven on the agenda, that's the approval of Board Minutes.
I move that the Board approve the minutes listed below as recommended. Regular meeting, 3/6/2024.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Oh, and just a small item for Board members, I've been reminded that when we vote with parliamentary procedure, when you want to vote against the motion, you have to say nay, as opposed to saying aye for the negatives. Right, so, anyway, let's just clean up our practice with that small thing. All right, so let's move then to item number eight, the Superintendent's Update.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Youngblood. So, have some updates for you. Ava did take the, take a number of these from the high school off of my plate tonight, but needless to say, it was a lot of pride with what's happened in the last week with the kids. So the first thing is, some people have been asking when the last day of school is. We have had four snow slash emergency days, which brings us to Wednesday, June 19th, as the last day of school at this point, to fulfill the Board adopted calendar of 182 days for students. That day also happens to be Juneteenth, which is a federal holiday at this point. So one of the things the Principals were discussing at our district leadership meeting the other day was, we haven't been in school since Juneteenth has become a holiday, so are there things we can do to recognize Juneteenth? And even if we're not in school for Juneteenth, as we end the school year in that area of the, the end of school. In addition to that, just as a little bit of history for the Board, there already has been questions. The statutory requirement is 180 days of school for a school year, not 182, that's a local choice that we have here. I think maybe two years in my tenure here, when we've gone a little longer than we would like, and after graduation, which happens to be Saturday, June 15th, there has been consideration of either having some reduced days, like early dismissal days, or just fulfilling 180 days and sending the students home, and having teacher meetings and professional learning. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I'm getting questions about it, you may be getting questions, so it's just something with the majority of you being new Board members, that has been something considered in the past. We heard some folks talk about it tonight, the swatting threats, the police continue their investigation, especially with Detective O'Brien, who's the cyber crimes detective, working with state and federal authorities, that continues. Things have calmed down. Part and parcel, the reason for the Chief not wanting the, not recommending that the meeting be livestreamed but recorded, to have a little bit of buffer time before putting the, the meeting out to the public. In that regard, there is not a legal requirement to video or audio record meetings, we have the technology, obviously, we've been doing that for decades. So just, that's just a piece there to give time to protect public comment speakers who are putting their address out there, as well as people up here that are on camera. CLES, some updates there. Parking lot, what's about to happen, Dave and I are waiting to, we're trying to get a meeting with ONG and with the NBC, the, under foundation of the north parking lot, which is the one that's... The under foundation of the north parking lot, which is the one that's fenced off, when people look through the fence, you can see the fencing and the islands. The flag is up now for the flagpole. Everything's working there. That's going to be getting its binder coat, we believe, over the April break. That's the first layer of paving. That's what's actually on the south parking lot right now. And so the north lot will become usable, we believe, right after April break. And the swing space would be anybody parking in the south lot will move over to the north lot, and it will give us some additional spaces so we could try to empty out the temporary lot, which is the one right along Candlewood Lake Road. So as we get more information and schedule on that, Dave and I will have a site map, color-coded, and be able to communicate that with families and staff. So we're excited about that. There were 25 guest readers for Read Across America at Candlewood Lake, so we're really proud of that. It was a lot of fun to go work with the kids and do the storytelling there. Kindergarten enrollment at CLES, right now formally totally registered. We have 76 students. We're anticipating, our budget is built for 160, so we're right about half the kids registered at this point, and it's still March. There are 11, people are always interested in this with the change in law with turning five by September 1st to attend kindergarten. We have 11 families that have wrote to Dr. P asking for the waiver. So the kids will go through their kindergarten assessment and decisions will be made there at the school with the families. They'll be working together on that. In terms of BHS, Ava talked a lot about it. I mean, just a lot of pride, the hockey team winning the SWC championship and going to the state finals. The musical Mamma Mia was unbelievable, it was incredible. The cheer team placing third in the New England Regionals, and Troy Mathahany qualifying for the state open in swim, and lots of kids, you know, going to those state finals. So just an incredible winter season, and like she said, the spring season is upon us. Importantly, the tennis courts, frustrating for all of us that it still is not quite finished. The top coating, I guess, that's going on should be done within a couple of weeks. Mr. Baldwin and Laura Murphy from Parks and Rec are working on alternative sites for the kids to make sure their practices continue. And if it gets into the competition time, they'll have a safe place to have those competitions and practices. It's important to know that this is a Parks and Rec project. It's not a school project. It's not even an NBC project. It's actually a Parks and Rec project. They're in charge of the project, the way it worked out with the town capital work. And then over at Whiskiner, the Unified Sports Program, for the second time, is honored as national champion. So we're really proud of the kids and all the work they've done there. And then finally, just two communication items. Probably within two weeks, the State of the District document will be published shortly after that. When we get back from April break, the budget flyer kind of outlining things prior to the referendum will get out there for families in the community. And then Parents Today received an update on Parents Square, which is a new communication platform we're moving forward on, and a update to smart site for our website. That went out to staff yesterday. Eric will be up giving a full presentation on Parents Square this evening. So thank you for your time.
That's great. Are there questions? I had a question on the, it's so weird to call it testing for kindergarten, but the assessment window for people who are applying for waivers, when is that going to be happening?
I could actually, is Dave over there? I see Dave. Dave, when is the window with the kindergarten assessment time?
They're firming updates in May.
Okay, there you go.
All right, right on.
Well, Dave didn't have a microphone on, so we're firming updates in May.
Okay, yes, thank you, thank you. Okay, cool. Then we're going to move to subcommittee reports. Let's start with facilities, please. Mr. Pachado.
Yes, good evening, everyone. We met on March 6th, then all members were present, including Casey Dier and Facility Director Dan Colby. As for all business, we discussed the AC project, the project being Respect. We are questioning whether or not to do structural work. It's about roughly four months until completion. For capital projects update, we're placing bollards on the sidewalks for, at all the schools. Those are huge units for safety reasons. Seven units we're getting. It's all approved and ready to go. For new business, we had an overage on the capital projects, and I'll address that later during the motion time. New hire, David Boy, we have experienced custodians starting on the 18th. As far as miscellaneous, we had water quality at Whiskiner Middle School. We're doing a lead service inventory on October 24th, and we don't have any lead in any of our lines at this time. And big shout out to Dan, he's been doing a lot of hard work. He's doing the legwork and compiling information from the state, and that's nearly complete. Tools for Schools is another program that we're going to be looking into. They look for teams in the schools and they help ID problems inside the schools that need to be repaired. As far as maintenance at CLES, it's winding down. Dan and did some fine tuning with the contractor, excuse me, during the winter break, and ongoing, basically an ongoing thing, but it continuously will be monitored. Open, we had some open items that we were discussing. We had some ongoing issues with the project at the middle school. They, for the locker rooms, I think, that's what it was, right? The locker rooms, thank you. These issues are in the hands of the contractor, and they are, and Dan's been working with the project manager regarding these issues, and he's going to address all of them and make sure that they are taken care of in a timely fashion.
I'm sorry, that was the high school locker room.
I'm sorry.
That's okay, no, that was my fault. I confirmed, yeah. And one, if I could add one update since that committee meeting about the custodian that was anticipated to start on the 18th. Due to, you know, own personal issues, they had to actually decline and back out, so we are still open in that area.
All right.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, sorry, what is a bollard?
It's like a giant-
Like the Target, like the big-
Like, think of those balls as Target?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like a giant cement ball that protects cars from ramming into-
So you don't drive at the same time.
Thank you, I did not know that had a name.
I didn't know either at the meeting, I Googled it.
We all talked about how to spell it at the meeting.
Right, it's like a new Scrabble word, right on.
And I Googled the spelling.
Also, could you talk a little bit about the second water issue under miscellaneous on the second page?
Second water issue, yes. So we, it says that we had, from what Dan was telling us, violations for some chloride, but to remove it, it's, we would need to do like a transfer of water treatment facility. There's some very, I guess, in detail issue with that. I'm not sure how we can go about that. We do have an alternative, maybe connect to the aquarium water system, and that's something that's been ongoing. And we're going to start getting proposals for that design, for that.
Yeah, and in fact, as part of our 10-year capital plan, I think it's in year two, I believe, of the plan that there is funding, you know, that we anticipate to request to hook up to the aquarium water source.
I didn't mark it.
Yeah.
And it's just important to note for everybody, you know, with our three school sites, in Brookfield for sewer, we are on all sewer line. We don't have septic or anything like that. But at Brookfield High School and at the middle school, we are on well supply. And so when you have your own well water and you're a public system of any kind, you are your own water treatment manager. So there's a lot of work that has to go into that. And actually, Dan's former life, you know, before he was our facility supervisor, he did that kind of work. So it's really helped us out there. At CLES, we, the project, the town project was bringing up an aquarium line at that time, as well as natural gas, and we were able to hook into those. So we have city water essentially at CLES.
Yeah, Dan's been a huge asset, he really is. He knows a lot, pretty much about everything, especially with that, so.
Thanks, Rob.
Absolutely, thank you.
Just about the high school, the two serious leaks on top of the boiler. Are those roof leaks or?
Oh, I'm sorry. No, those are on the boiler itself. Dan actually went in on his own to repair it for the most part, and that's where we're at now. He went in and disassembled the unit, it's all ready to be fixed and ready to go. So he addressed it himself, and I believe he's waiting for the-
So what's the pricing on nine?
So there was, there was two quotes that were received for the complete repair of those, they're huge fittings that are on top of the boiler. And so the one quote was like $9,800, another quote was $27,000. So Dan said, well, let me see what, and he used to do this type of work in his former life, and so he was able to disassemble the unit and do a lot of the sort of the legwork, and, but now a welder has to come in to replace it and fix, put the new part on and weld it and to repair it. So he believes that the initial work that he's done will bring that price down, you know, considerably.
Wait, according to him, it will bring it down substantially. So I put that there as the original one, but the work that he's doing should save us a ton. I mean, we haven't gotten the final word on that yet.
Yeah.
But he's, yeah, he's great. Seems to know everything, so it's awesome.
Are you guys good with this, or do you want to?
And just one other thing.
Yeah.
For the youth commission project, did the lockers come in? I mean, the benches coming in?
The benches were, they're here. Okay, I know they were ordered. It looks like they, they're here, yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, that was a student-led project. I did check that out, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention that, to remove the lockers and put the benches in.
Okay, so we'll move to personnel and negotiations. I guess that's me then. All right. So our meeting was held on Tuesday, March 12th. It was myself, Rosa, Joy, and Dr. Brill, and Casey, and we, we were in executive session to discuss strategy and negotiations about collective bargaining. And that was pretty much it. We'll be continuing some of those discussions later tonight in executive session. Do you want to add anything? No? Do you want to add anything?
And we have to adjust the minutes, I think Anna was at that meeting too.
For the personnel.
So we'll have to make a correction there.
Ah, yes, okay. Well, that's right, you had to, you had to get out of there.
I did, I don't remember why.
Okay, so we'll need to amend those. Okay, so with that, let's move to finance committee, please.
Okay, we last met on Tuesday, March 12th. And so we did receive public comment regarding some of our documents, and typically we don't release documents that are not approved to the public, but we, I think what we can very easily do, since we're nothing but transparent, is simply have draft written all over the documents. It's simply just the check registers in our financial report that we receive every single month. So I don't think that's a problem, and we can start doing that at our very next meeting. The other thing regarding budget transfers, that we also received some public comment about, typically the board actually historically has never even received these reports. That's something actually, Casey, you initiated on your own, which again adds to transparency, so thank you for that. We discussed, again, the check registers as we usually do. We asked several clarifying questions regarding some of those checks. And then we went over the February financial report. So there, Casey summarized that, and this is, again, what I've been sort of discussing, sort of like this sort of running total that we've got going. The committee reviewed that our projected net budget shortfall is now approximately $615,000. The change that we saw from last month, which was around, I want to say 500, 490-something, yep, is due to two new outplaced students with special needs and changes to another student's special needs professional services. So those are the major fluctuations that we typically see. Now, I do want to say that most of the board's budgetary shortfall is due to unbudgeted costs related to special education, but the Boards of Finance, Selectment, and Education, we have previously established a budgeting strategy that removes all contingency from our budget for those items. So they have been kept well aware of this budgetary shortfall since the beginning of the year. It's something that we have been doing for many years. And we have assurances that those shortfalls will be funded with town appropriations at the end of the fiscal year if necessary. That's what we've historically done. Another large portion of the board's budgetary shortfall is due to unrealized savings and teacher turnover. So that's another item that we've been discussing in this year and in last year as well. Each year, the board adds that negative contingency in our budget of $200,000. So we automatically add a negative $200,000 in our budget every year. That is due to the fact that we assume that we're going to have some savings from teachers retiring and the hiring of less veteran teachers. But currently, this year and last year, we saw no savings from that turnover, or very little savings, and instead reflect in this particular year, an unbudgeted increase in salaries of approximately $25,000. So that's another big part of the budgetary shortfall this year. There's other contributing factors. Electricity, we've talked about, athletic transportation, substitutes, those are all, those are all areas of the budget that are significantly over. But we do have savings in various accounts that partially offset this. Those are savings that are from leaves and vacancies and a newly instituted budget freeze of all non-essential purchases. Okay, so the 615 is net of all of the exposures, as well as all of the savings. New business, I did mention budget transfers, so we, we got a report of those budget transfers, and those were in our February financials, which are only approved tonight, and they will be available for the public after that. And we then went over the 24-25 budget. We went over some of the adjustments that we have to date because of the ongoing fluctuations in special education. We're seeing some savings, we're also from students coming back into the district, but we're also seeing some overages there as well. And again, teacher turnover, leaves and vacancies. So far, I think, actually, as of today, now we have two teachers retiring, right? Or two or three?
There's, one has formally retired, and then there are some that are interested, but nothing formal yet.
Okay. So the net impact of their retirements is going to be determined in the next couple of months, and even actually into the summer as we hire their replacements. We then went over the food service RFP. So we just received notification that there are eight vendors that are interested in the RFP, which is a lot more than we had the last time. So that will be, go ahead, I can tell you wanted to say something.
We did have the walkthrough yesterday, and five vendors did show up. So showing up for the initial walkthrough was, is a requirement, so.
So we're five.
So there's five, and hopefully they'll all submit proposals, and we'll, yeah.
Great. And then at the time, remember this was on March 12th, Dr. Brill informed us that the committee, informed the committee that the RFPs for the legal services were due on the 13th, so the next day. So that process is moving forward as well. And that was it.
Thank you. A lot of technical information, but important stuff, so thank you very much for that.
Sure.
Did you want to say, oh, yeah.
Since the window closed for the legal services, it's due on the 13th, when we get-
So we're actually meeting with purchasing agent tomorrow, I think. Yep, we're spending some time tomorrow. I think we have seven or, seven, eight or nine, I don't know the exact number of people who, firms that have submitted for the RFP, so we're going to look through that. And then I'll be talking with Wendy, and we need to talk as a board as to what the process is going to be. I think we talked about before, are we going to have a subcommittee of the board, you know, an ad hoc or the full board, perhaps interview?
Can I tell you what we talked about?
Oh, sure.
I mean, we decided together that we were all going to participate in this. Right?
Yeah, so Wendy and I will look at the calendar, we'll set dates for that. I mean, you have to buckle down for a long night because we'll be interviewing, you know, at least several firms, for sure.
Right on, great. So Cape Committee, please.
Okay, so myself and Anna and Hala were present on Wednesday, March 12th, and we asked for a high school midterm review update. So this is the second year that midterms and final exams have happened since the pandemic, and the focus has been on increasing rigor. And different departments have used midterms, used the data differently, so we talked about that. And after reflecting on it, you know, the school decided to move back to having midterms to help students to be more prepared for post-secondary educational experiences. We did talk about some questions and concerns that we had, you know, discussions around making sure that they're equitable between the disciplines, how standardized they are, and really being transparent and reflective on exposure, communication, consistency between the disciplines and the grade levels and whatnot. So we had a nice, healthy conversation about midterms and finals. We also discussed the K3 reading resources. There were seven or eight approved reading programs put out by the CSDE, and we got an update about the committee for the district to go through these programs. And as of now, their first choice is Amplify. They do need to correlate, you know, the science and social standards of the program, but Easton uses it, and it's currently the committee's number one choice. Their second choice is, it was, oh, McGraw-Hill Open Court Reading. We use a part of it now, but they're saying that we would need to rebuy the whole kit, the company's saying we would need to rebuy. So we're concerned about the resources maybe not being so flexible. And we discussed some of the other programs that were suggested, but reasons for them not wanting to push that forward. We're hoping that in the April Cape meeting, we'll get a final decision on which program was the committee's going to put forward to us as a board. We also got instructional- We also got instructional coaching update. Asked for a little more data to follow up with that. And the PDEC update, they're going to meet again as a committee on March 22 and April 1. And we're hoping to have two draft plans at our June meeting regarding that. And that's about it. Anybody has any questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
So when it says that with the number one choice, we would need to correlate the Science and Social Studies standards, does that mean that those programs would have to change ultimately? Or meaning that we would just have to tie them?
So they integrate the content areas, which is great, which is what we really like. But we would have to correlate the standard.
So we have to get new programs across the board?
No, we would have to embed the standards with that program.
Got it.
Yeah, we would just have to, as part of our kind of onboarding of this tool, we would just continue, like I spoke about in our curriculum review. We would go through the standards. The standards have actually shifted with social studies as well, so it's an opportune time. And so part of that reflection and review for the social studies standards would be crosswalking with this tool. CKLA actually stands for Content Knowledge, Core Knowledge, Language Arts. And so it's kind of... The nice thing is that the literacy piece asks students to have content knowledge in all areas. So that's another benefit. We're meeting tomorrow to review their site visit that would happen last week. I'm confident for April.
All right. Well, thanks, everyone. It looks like we can move to the consent agenda.
I move that the board approve the items on the consent agenda as recommended. New hires, resignations, retirements, February financials, the 2023-24 budget transfers.
All in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so unanimously...
Wendy, can I say something?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to acknowledge some people might not have the agenda in front of them. The retirement that's on the consent agenda is Mrs. Shop, longtime elementary teacher here in the district, 37 years in our district. We cannot thank her enough for everything she's done over the years. So we had a quick personal conversation, and we got to get together for a little conversation even more because we were just really thrilled for her. And I remember her talking about that first year at Candlewood Lake might be my last year as we transfer over. So we had a good conversation about that. So anyway, congratulations to Carol, and we just can't thank her enough. Look forward to celebrating her as the year ends.
Yeah, congratulations, Carol. She was a wonderful educator. I'll never forget when she told me, "Don't worry, I have lots of boys. He's going to be okay. I can handle him."
Okay. So with that, let's move to item number 11, new business. The first item on the agenda is the Technology and Human Resources reorganization. So we are going to discuss the consolidation and take possible action regarding the draft shared services agreement with the Town of Brookfield regarding the tech department and the draft reorganization chart regarding human resources. And an executive session is anticipated for that item. Okay. So next, we are going to have a presentation about Parent Square. Eric Conklin, our tech director, is here to share that with us. Welcome, Eric, and thanks for coming.
Thank you. Thanks, Doctor. Did he give you a handout? That works. Yeah, good. Yep, thank you. Oh, my God, yes, I do. That would be the third time I forgot.
She's aimed up?
He has hands. I don't want to make the same mistake I made.
We'll pass it around.
If anyone can see from the screen, I made 10 copies.
Okay.
Thanks, Eric.
The handouts I have for you are just the presentation that's up here. So except for the three-minute video I'm about to show, the rest of it, you can follow along. I'll wait for Anna.
Sure. She'll be done.
So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak about Parent Square tonight. We are very excited about what the Parent Square platform can bring to the district with enhanced, seamless, and streamlined communication throughout the district. While I'll get into a little more about it, I'll start with a quick introductory video that we've been sharing that just tells you about what Parent Square is for both staff and families.
Our goal is to help you streamline your communication and parent engagement efforts across your schools. Parent Square unifies communication for all stakeholders and is 100% parent-centric. That means that everyone is using the same platform, including teachers, principals, staff, admin, even the superintendent. Here, we're logged in as a principal at Lincoln Elementary School. As an admin in Parent Square, I know exactly what's going on at my school and have full access and insight into all school-to-home communication. I can also send out messages to the entire school or I can send to specific grade levels, classrooms, or groups. We integrate and sync on a nightly basis with your student information system to ensure accurate reach at all times and minimal effort for all users to get started. There are three main ways to communicate in Parent Square. Alerts and notifications, posts, and private chats. Let's start by sending out an emergency alert from the app. Traditional one-way alerts and emergency notifications deliver as phone calls, emails, texts, or app notifications. You can also send alerts from the web portal. The second way to communicate in Parent Square is via a post. Sending posts are for day-to-day communication, used by teachers for their classroom communication and administrators for school or district-wide communication. A teacher has access to send messages to their classroom, grade level, and select groups only. And roles can be restricted even further. Posts include plenty of different features such as photos and files, links, and item requests. If you're sharing an event, you can quickly add it to your event calendar, which syncs with your existing calendars. You can also request RSVPs, ask for a few volunteers, or even set up online payments. You can also send forms electronically through Parent Square. Paper permission slips often end up lost at the bottom of students' backpacks. Ensure your important forms are delivered directly to parents by adding a digital form with optional electronic signature to your post. You can also send out newsletters with our newsletter template option. We build everything in-house, so the look and feel will remain the same whether you use one or all of our add-ons. The post will reach parents via email, text, or app notification, depending on their preference. The third main way to communicate in Parent Square is via private chats, one-to-one or one-to-many. Parents can also initiate these private chats if they want to reach their child's teacher, and all communication is done via the private portal or app. Now that everyone at your school or district is using the same communication platform, we can gather statistics for you and help measure not only reach and delivery, but also parent engagement and usage. Also, admins can assign different roles with restricted access, so you know with confidence that your staff are communicating with the right group, class, and grade level at all times. A district account will have super-user access available to communicate district-wide alerts and announcements, as well as insight and access to all site communication, including private chats. As you can see, there's no need to go outside of Parent Square for any of your communication and parent engagement needs. All features are available at Lincoln Elementary, but you can start with as few or as many of our features as you'd like, since we offer three different packages. I hope you enjoyed learning more about Parent Square. I look forward to discussing how we can help engage your school community.
So while the... Let me fix this. While the video really says it all, the only point I'll make in the video is there's one sentence that's a little bit dated that they have three levels of software package. They no longer do. They have one. So every piece of the software, every feature that you saw up there is available as part of the package to the district. And over time, we will begin to use, obviously, starting first with classroom and district communication.
Thanks for visiting.
And I have to click it again. So I just really wanted to show quickly, this is what the screen looks like. It's got a section for posts, messages, alerts. You can see I posted the letter, the email that I'll get to that was sent to parents today. I created it as a post to show you what it looks like. It looks very social media-like, very familiar user interface, so should be very easy to adapt and adjust to. The only thing I'll point out is up here, where it says Brookfield Public Schools, staff will be able to click that dropdown and communicate with their individual classrooms, athletic teams, after-school activities, or anything like that. So they can do full... We're going to be able to do groups, classrooms, all the way up to district level. This will become our new platform, and I'll get to this in a second, for, for example, the emails that have been sent out the last couple of weeks, snow alerts, closings, delays, anything like that. The one thing the video did not talk about that we are implementing in conjunction, and as excited as I'm about Parent Square, I might be more excited about this one, is a new district website. It's called Smart Site. It is owned by Parent Square. This is the first pass at what it's going to look like. There's a lot of work left to do, and I'll get into the webmaster committee that's been doing a lot of work on that. But this is an idea of what the new website's going to look like. And when certain communications are sent out through Parent Square, they're automatically going to post here as well, which is all part of that seamless and efficient communication, where when we post one message in one place, it posts everywhere as well. And obviously, that depends on the message that we're sending. We want to share a quick timeline of events. Both of these are happening in conjunction with each other, and we're kind of smack dab right here in the middle of it. So on the Parent Square side, we started to have conversations and product demonstrations of various products with the IT team. And then we took those conversations and went to district leadership, made an agreement on the benefits and the power that Parent Square can bring to us. We also reached out to other districts. We have districts in Connecticut that are using it that we know of and have been using it for some time. We've heard nothing but great feedback, positive feedback from their use, and both on the staff side and the parent engagement side. So that got us very excited. We signed the agreement in December of 2023. The implementation team, which was made up of myself, Denise Walsh, our systems information manager, who does everything Power School-related, and Kathy Colavito, our lead tech, met with Parent Square. We set up our accounts, got everything syncing. Anything that happens in Power School comes over to Parent Square. So if somebody changes their email address, gets a new phone number, and it gets updated in Power School the next day, it's in Parent Square, like a lot of our other platforms. In February, I visited with the Whiskinier staff and introduced Parent Square to them, along with Smart Sites. And we also introduced the platform to the newly-formed Speaks Committee. Help me, Superintendent Parent...
Student, parent, educator, advisory.
Advisory Committee to the Superintendent. Thank you. Yep. And we continued that discussion in March. And in yellow right here is where we are right now. Earlier today, I visited the CLES faculty and introduced Parent Square to them. I'll talk to Mr. Blanda, and we'll get on with the high school very soon. And yesterday, we sent our introductory letter to parent, to staff, and let them start logging into their accounts. Earlier today, we sent it to parents. And we've already had some start to create accounts. We've had some parents reach out where they maybe hit a wrong button and needed it fixed or just had some questions. So we've already got people starting to kind of log in and get started. So now that we're at this point, the next couple of months are going to be soft rollout. We are going to test platform tools, learn them, schedule trainings for staff and families, and then assist with any account registration and setup. We are in soft-launch mode with a release of Go Live in July. And then whenever done when we go live, that just starts the next step, which will be, we're going to do some parent training sessions or information sessions in some evenings in August. We'll hold some in-person. We'll hold some virtual sessions. And then we'll also have professional development, professional training for staff when they return for their first couple of days in August. And I put August through October and beyond because we're going to kind of do this in phases. We're not going to show everything at one shot. We're going to do the parts that they need to do to communicate. And then when we get to the parent-teacher conference, part of it, we'll teach that module, and we'll kind of move on down the road as to not overwhelm everybody. Smart Sites has been kind of a similar timeline, except that we've been having conversation and kind of decision-making over a new district website for probably over a year now, looking at different solutions and platforms. And so that's kind of stretched out over a little more time. But again, we signed that agreement. Myself, Denise, and Kathy met with the Smart Site team to develop our timeline. In February, we developed our much-needed and longtimecoming webmaster committee made up of some IT team, administration, and the individuals at each school that actually are in charge of updating the website. And they are going to be a regular part of the implementation of this page. And currently, right now, where we are in, after we... In February, after we chose the design that I showed you, we are currently... The company gave us a site map, which is a list of every link, page, everything that you click on our current website. And it's our decision what we want to bring over and what we don't want to bring over. You know, we obviously want to bring over relevant, new, fresh information, but some of the older stuff will end up archiving and not bringing over and going from there. April, May, and June will be continued to refine, adjust, fix. Get ready for July 1. And then when you start going to BrookfieldPS.org on July 1, you'll get Parent Square instead of our current district website. And we are very, very excited about that. So what's Parent Square replacing in the district? Parent Square can do all of these. School Messenger, which is our current mass communication system. So when you get your emails from BPS Communications, they're coming from a platform called School Messenger. We'll be switching over to Parent Square. Talking Points is a communication platform focused on our multi-language learner population. Parent Square can handle that as well with the private messaging feature. So we'll be switching over to that. Meet the Teacher, which is our current parent-teacher conference and event scheduling platform. Parent Square can handle that. Panorama, which does our current climate surveys, coming out probably within the next month or so. Actually, it's about that time of year. Parent Square will do that. And then Remind and Class Tag. Remind and Class Tag are both classroom communication tools that are informally used throughout the district. So we support... We allow their use. They meet all the data privacy laws, all that. But we, as the district, don't require the use of them, and it's up to the individual teachers as to whether or not they'd like to use Remind or Class Tag. And while I put this on another slide, I'll note this here. Parent Square actually bought Remind. And so now that is probably going to be going away and absorbed into Power School anyway, Parent Square anyway. And because I think it's important, and we obviously are having budget discussions throughout, from October through the rest of the year, I thought I'd share the budget impact that this has. And you can see the current costs on the left-hand side of what all these platforms cost this year, not forecasted for next year, what they cost this year, and what the Parent Square and district website portions will cost next year. So you'll see here, we have a savings of $10,607.60. In looking at this, I did receive one renewal quote before I had informed the vendor that we weren't renewing, and that was Talking Points, which is going up well over $14,000 next year. So the savings are actually going to be greater, and those are already reflected in the budget. And there was a one-time implementation cost of $5,250, which was paid out of this year's budget to be able to do the soft rollout. And as many of the things that have come to the board this year, and we thought was important as well, was that Parent Square does align to our strategic plan, most obviously for communicators and collaborators. But also, on the other two, it touches on all four. And we see we have investment in district technology and tools to enhance school, the learning process, and all educational impact of the district. One of the things I like to point out is while it says down here, "Regular feedback from all staff is collected to evaluate technology programs and platforms," we obviously had feedback from other school districts and some members of our community as well. So we did reach out past the district to hear more about Parent Square. And then, you know, this fits in, again, here, continued development of technology infrastructure and timely and user-friendly communication community and staff engagement. And we've heard the feedback that we could do more, and Parent Square is our more, and it's going to be our more. So again, very excited to bring it forward tonight. That's all I have. I'd happy to take any questions. Otherwise, thank you.
That's great. Thank you, Eric.
Thank you. It really does look user-friendly. Did you guys have questions?
How does the company recommend the rollout? What is their recommendation to roll it out to the community?
So...
To get buy... You know, everyone to buy in and...
Yeah. So they have a whole welcome kit, a whole launch kit and all that. And so we are actually right online. So an announcement to our community. And then next is going to be actual tomorrow. And then next is going to be actual, tomorrow, I opted to not do it today, I'm going to do it tomorrow. We actually send invitations with unique links to parents and families. And then with like an invitation, please join Parent Square and then come to us. And then, of course, training, 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 and parent outreach, and which is why we're doing our sessions in August and beyond. But we're going to have in-school sessions in the evenings, some virtual sessions, and actually doing virtual sessions was a recommendation that came out of Speaks-
Yeah.
-to offer more to parents. And then, and then it, committing to the use of it-
Yeah.
-is really the big one. Yep.
We've already heard from some parents who are eager to be part of this early rollout. So Dr. Brill, those folks should get in touch with you, and you'll put them in touch with-
Already was in touch with one person, already.
Yep. Already got a message about one. Yep.
I have a couple of questions. So this obviously needs every parent to participate, right? So it's like, we need like 100% of parents to, because how else are they going to get communications?
That's a great question. That is ideal, of course, in any situation. However, this does work like School Messenger-
Okay.
...in the fact that there is no sign-up due to the importance of notifications. So should a parent not sign up, which really comes down to signing up really gives the ability to customize your account, add and remove phone numbers, change your notification preferences, and look at historical posts, because nothing goes away. Those posts just keep going like Facebook. They keep going down and down, and you can look back. When a notification is sent, whether it's from a teacher to their classroom or from the district offices to the entire district, the emails are still sent just like they are now. So nobody is left in the dark, even if they don't register an account.
Okay.
So it's, the question is, do they want to interact two ways?
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Great. And then my next question was about, so for some of our families who might not speak English, is there any sort of like translation that the platform can do?
So that's, so while my, the email that we sent out went out in English, of course, that's why the next part is going to be the invitation to families-
Okay.
-because all of the data is already synced, and as part of kind of how that Talking Points tool works and how Parent Square tool is going to work, when we send out the invitation, it will send out to the native language that the parents have specified in Power School.
Okay.
So, you know, whatever the language they pick there, we also have some families that, while, let's say, Spanish is their primary language, they actually still choose to receive the email in English, and they do.
Yeah.
So we have those cases. So the system will handle on a case-by-case basis and send it out.
Great.
Right now, it has a capacity for 100 languages.
Wow, that's really great.
Over 100.
Yeah.
Awesome.
I just had a couple of questions on the meeting, sorry, on the movie. It mentioned the add-ons. Did we take, did we get all the add-ons or some of?
Yes, because that's kind of at the end where I said the three packages.
Yeah.
That's the part of that video that's just a little, they don't have a newer one. They don't, there's no, there's one add-on I didn't take.
Okay.
And it's the, because there, and there was only one add-on to take. Everything else that you saw there was included in it because they, because they changed their software packages. The only add-on was the phone call ability from inside of the app, but we just put in a whole new district-wide phone system. So we, we are, staff can use the phones that they have available to them to make phone calls. Everything else written communication-wise is available to us to implement as we see.
Okay. And then you mentioned that Power School, any updates on Power School? And the messaging system on Power School is probably not going to be used anymore because they'll use that, like, you know, teachers have the ability to message their classes on Power School. They probably would go-
Right. So this is a, this is a district initiative and a district directive that it will all go through Parent Square. That is correct.
Digital locker-wise, like for parents in the beginning of the year, they're still going to go to Power School if they do all that?
Yes. That remains the same because Parent Square doesn't have a solution for that. The other one that I got asked about a lot was for the elementary for CLES was the Pick My Kid app. Parent Square also does not have a solution for that. So there are a couple of things that, that aren't going to be able to go into Parent Square, but this company's growing, so who knows? By next year, we could be talking about adding that in.
And the last thing, how secure is the login procedure on Power Square? Is there like, it sends you a code and does all that, or is it just email?
Two-factor authentication. We're going to set that up-
Okay.
-because that is actually a requirement anyway of our cybersecurity insurance, which is why we have all of our staff doing it now, and we have to do it with all of our platforms. So at least, at least on the staff side.
Yeah. Thank you.
So will the staff be advised to, that will be their main way they communicate with parents?
Correct.
Just through that? Okay. So it's almost like, you know, how fluid is the communication, like the group? Is that what it means by groups, where you create a group like at a class? You see classes and then, I'm going to have to go back to it, but it said groups.
So, yeah, so a lot of the, that will depend on, some of that will depend on what the teacher sets up.
Okay.
So, for example, all the classes, right? So Power School rosters all of our classes. That's where kids get their class schedule, anything like that. A teacher could create a custom group, you know, say for chess club or, I'll use it, ski team, or anything like that.
So is that for the parents or it's-
So that, that side is for, that side is for staff.
Okay.
Yep.
That's good. Great questions. Thanks, guys. And thank you, Eric. That was super informative.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. So let's move to item C under New Business. This is about Security Task Force Committee membership.
I move that the board approve Rosa Fernandez and Stephanie Sikora as the new board representatives for the Security Task Force.
Second.
So can we get a vote to approve Rosa and Stephanie as the new board representatives for the Security Task Force? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So it passes unanimously on Security Task Force Committee membership. Thank you. Let's move now to the, we have two motions under Healthy Food Option. The first is certification, and the second is about a food and beverage exemption. And for people listening, you have to listen to the whole thing because they seem to be identical for the first half, and then they, you can see the difference in the second half. So take it away, Stephanie.
I move pursuant to CGS Section 10-215F, the Brookfield Public Schools Board of Education certifies that all food items offered for sale to students in the school under its jurisdiction and not exempt, exempted, from the Connecticut nutrition standards published by the Connecticut State Department of Education will comply with the Connecticut nutrition standards during the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025. This certification shall include all food offered for sale to students separately from reimbursable meals at all times and from all sources, including but not limited to school stores, vending machines, school cafeterias, culinary programs, and any fundraising activity on school premises sponsored by the school or non-school organizations and groups.
Second.
Okay. Do we have a vote? I mean, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed? Right? So the first motion about healthy food certification passes unanimously. Now the second.
I move that the Brookfield Public Schools Board of Education will allow the sale to students of food items that do not meet the Connecticut nutrition standards and beverages not listed in Section 10-221Q of the Connecticut general statutes, provided that the following conditions are met. One, the sale is in connection with an event occurring after the end of the regular school day or on the weekend. And two, the sale is at the location of the event. And three, the food and beverage items are not sold from a vending machine or school store. An "event" is an occurrence that involves more than just a regularly scheduled practice, meeting, or extracurricular activity. For example, soccer games, school plays, and interscholastic debates are events, but soccer practices, play rehearsals, and debate team meetings are not. The "regular school day" is the period from midnight before to 30 minutes after the end of the official school day. Quote-location means where the event is being held and must be the same place as the food and beverage sales.
Second.
Okay. All in favor of this motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. So the, the motion for healthy food, food and beverage exemption also passes unanimously. And before we move on, did you guys sit and like look at that motion for a long time?
Yeah.
I was like, but what about cupcakes? You know? So, so it's good that they made an exception because I think that contributes to school spirit and fundraising. Okay. So then let's move now to item F, the policy on survey of students.
I move that the board approve policy number 6162.51, Survey of Students, for a first reading as recommended by the Policy Communication Subcommittee, Exhibit H.
Second.
Okay. So for first, for first readings, do we vote on this as well?
Yes.
We vote for the first reading?
Yeah. Just want to discuss something first.
Okay. So, yeah, is there any discussion on this motion since it's on the floor?
Yeah. So I want to be very clear that, you know, I did vote to move this to the full board because I'm on the committee. But since then, you know, something's come up, and I'm not comfortable with some of the language, given something that has come up instructionally in the past couple of weeks. So I'm not really comfortable with that first, very first sentence in this policy. In this policy, surveys, analysis, or evaluations refer to methods of gathering data for research purposes. So it's come to my attention that if our students are given surveys, if it's not, it's, doesn't fall under these categories if it's not for research purposes. So I interpreted originally as if it falls under the A through H items, that it's off the table. So if it says research purposes, even if it's a survey given, and let's say, A, political affiliations or beliefs of the student or the student's parents, if it's a survey that that's the goal, is to identify their political affiliation, I think it's in violation of the policy. So if having that word "research" is what's going to, you know, make or break the policy, then I'm not in support of the policy.
Who would be doing the research?
Well, could be anybody.
Can we just make sure-
So I don't know about research.
So that we just don't step on each other's talk?
Sorry.
That's all right. Did you want the floor?
No, that was it.
Okay. Did you want to respond?
What did you say? Oh.
It said, you said it doing for research purposes.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I mean, I didn't-
So they collect the data, someone's researching and doing something with the data. I'm sure who gets the data and all that, doing the research.
Right. I don't know who's doing the research.
Could I ask a question? Sorry. I don't want to, so I guess maybe this kind of addresses like your question too. So when you survey, whoever surveys, because plenty of surveys go on, right? Some from the district, some are from outside organizations, right? It's, you're gathering data for research purposes, right? Because why else would you ask anybody any questions, right? So I guess my question is, like, what surveys wouldn't be for research purposes?
That's a great question. Right? So why would we-
Well, I don't, I think by definition, a survey is for research purposes. So I guess-
Well, so if, if a survey's being given to students in a classroom, right, I don't know why it would be given, for what research purposes it would be given, if it's, if the end goal is to determine your political affiliation.
Okay. Can I, can I reclaim the, speaking for a second? So I thought about this a lot too, because, so I think, I think you hit on the key phrase there, that it's for research purposes. And that means that, as you guys have drawn out, that means that someone is collecting large-scale data to say like, I don't know, something about juniors in Connecticut, you know what I mean? Or fourth graders in Fairfield County or whatever. I think that when, just from my own experience as a social studies teacher with giving kids online, I guess you could call them surveys, to understand their political affiliation, that's not for research purposes. That's for, that's for reflection and for, I mean, I would say instruction. You know, like, this is, this is what the landscape of ideology could look like, you know? And currently, this is where you seem to be, but I, but that's not, that's not research purposes. That's like an assignment.
Right. So that's why I'm not comfortable with the policy as it reads. My understanding was if there's a survey being given and it falls under these, one of these A through H items, it cannot be given.
Yes, you're correct. I think that's, that is the case for, for research, if the survey is for research purposes, like if it's from, I mean, and Dr. Mann could probably help us out here with like organizations that would issue surveys for large-scale data gathering to students.
Right. Well, so for example, when we do have outside agencies, like we had Brookfield Cares last year, administer their, their survey, that was for research for us, for our, for our district, for our community. And that was, so that's, that's kind of the idea of collecting data on a specific group in a targeted, intentional way versus an inventory that might be found online that would give a student information about themselves or, yeah.
I think for context, the district has operated without this policy. We've worked on this for about a year and a half now. So there isn't a rush to move this forward. Joy brings up a good point. We had a really nice conversation a couple of weeks ago about this exact issue. So certainly, we could, we have a policy meeting on April 24th. So given that it's still been brought for first read, depending on whether the board wants to accept it as first read or not, Policy Committee, given tonight's issue that you brought up, Joy, I think we should bring it back to Policy Committee and have a further conversation, do a little, do a little more of our own research on this, for sure.
Okay. So would you like to, would you like to table the motion or advance for a vote?
I would like to vote.
All right. Let's, let's go ahead and vote, and then-
And remember, this is a vote on first read-
First reading.
-of anything. So there's no vote on adopting the policy tonight. It's just a first read to put it before the board.
Okay.
That's all it is.
All right. So all in favor of the Survey of Students policy, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Okay. So by a vote of 4-3, the policy for first read has been approved.
Then Holliday, think, do we want to give board members a date for feedback to the Policy Committee about this?
I think we would. I think that at the next, at the next policy meeting, we should definitely maybe further discuss this and then come back to the board with some information.
When's your next-
April 24th.
Fourth, I think, 24th. So maybe by the Monday, the 22nd, people can get information? If they have any questions to the committee?
Or Monday, the 15th.
It's for a break. Yeah. Maybe Monday, the 15th. Maybe that'd be better, and then we have to break.
Well, the earlier the better.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. So moving to item G, request for additional capital funding.
Sorry about that. I'm sorry. I was going to make a motion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was supposed to come to, can I?
Oh, sure.
No.
Oh. Yeah, go ahead.
I'll wait. Carry on.
I move that the Board of Education request additional funding from the town in the amount of $913 for the capital project HS 201, the BHS control system, and $8,000 for the capital project HS 205 for the BHS guidance wing roof.
Is there a discussion on this?
So as far as I, as I knew, that that project was closed, right? The guidance wing roof, so-
Yeah. Can I, can I, I'll speak to both of these things. So, yeah, the project is closed. There are some remaining invoices out, left to be paid, which have actually put the POs over budget. It's, these are both topics that have been discussed with, you know, on the town side with Marcia and Paulini on the town side. And there is, there's additional, both of these projects are bonded projects. And so there's additional funds available. If it's a bonded project, funding has to be moved from a similar bonded project in the same year. Marcia believes that's, you know, there's funding available. This is really a formality, because the town can't really just decide to move school capital projects from one project to another. So she just wants this sort of formal, in writing. I spoke with her today. The minutes from this meeting with, if the board does move forward and approve this recommended motion, will suffice as formal documentation that the board is making the request. And the $913 for the BHS control system, those were just reimbursables, just some minor invoices that put the project over for some reimbursables. The $8,000 on the BHS guidance wing roof was for architectural services on the project. So that's what, that's what put those two over budget.
Anything, one last piece for context? The town owns the schools? One last piece for context, the town owns the schools. The school, the Board of Ed does not own the schools. So all capital goes through the town in its separate funding, not part of the operational budget that was discussed during the finance report tonight, or when we developed the budget. The capital is a separate, town-funded area.
Are there other questions or discussion? Okay, Lynn, let's put this to a vote, the request for additional capital funding, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? So the motion passes for the request for the additional capital funding. Okay, moving now to item 12, old business. We're gonna talk about the adopted budget for next year, and hear about any changes. Hopefully, they're good ones.
Well, it's just an action, sorry.
Are we on discussion yet about this, or is there?
There's no motion.
Oh, okay. So Rosa, do you want to maybe just give a little insight as to where the Board of Finance is with, moving forward with their approved budget? Which is the town budget right now?
Yes.
For the public to consider?
Yes, so as you likely know, when the Board of Selectmen met, and you'll have to maybe correct me on the exact numbers, but we were, we were looking at a just over $500,000 reduction to the 24-25 budget, right? This week, the Board of Finance took an additional cut of $153,000. So we are looking at a total reduction to the 24-25 budget of seven.
728,000.
728,000. So most of that, most of that honestly, we had started to adjust with the health insurance and with some special education savings. So, but there's still about a little over $200,000 in cuts that we will, that we will need to find. And those are the, those are the difficult conversations we'll have to have in these meetings.
The, that 200,000-plus dollars that we need to discuss, we actually at District Leadership Meeting met with the principals and Mr. Rowland yesterday, and we started just talking in generalities about where we might find those savings, or address those cuts. And everybody's working on that, we're gonna reconvene in two weeks, and come up with a game plan of how we're gonna address that. I'm thinking, if we stay to the typical course, we'll bring back a recommendation at the April 10th meeting. We'll have a chart up there with all the reductions, meeting 728,000. Like we said, Rosa, you were talking about, reducing the increase in health insurance from what we estimated originally at 7%, all the way down now with the town to 2%. So we've got a lot of favorable information there. I think that's like $270,000 toward that 728 total cut we're talking about. And then Mr. Rowland and the team, they're working with families of a few of our students who actually are in outplacement settings, and they're looking forward to coming back next year. So there's some significant savings there as well, that we've shared with everybody in earlier meetings, that got us to around 500,000 toward the now 728. So there's the just over $200,000 we need to find in the next couple of weeks. And we'll bring a plan back for you.
Did you guys want to ask other things about the budget?
Okay.
Good.
Okay. All right, so then that concludes old business, and now we are ready for public comment. Mrs. Kikase, I believe you're first.
Deborah Kikase, 21 Meadowview Drive, Brookfield, Connecticut. I don't know how I said Brookfield, but. So I had something entirely different prepared tonight, so I'm speaking off the cuff. I was going to echo something similar to the special ed issue that's going on in our district currently, but there's something that I feel that I need to address, because I see it coming up time and time again at every board meeting. Parents like myself, taxpayer, the parent only gets three minutes' time while we're up here. It's so important, we wait hours to speak, and oftentimes, I see parents stopped, dead in their tracks, you're not absorbing what we're saying, we're now off track, and it's over what we cannot say while we're here. So I just want to establish first, once you allow for public comment, and this is a public forum, freedom of speech, our amendment applies. You cannot prevent us from saying anything that we wish to say. You can recommend it, you can suggest it, you can say out of respect, but you cannot tell us what we can and cannot say. Matter of fact, you participate in CAE, I've seen the districts get awards for it. Under CAE, and you are all new, majority of you, I suggest that you study CAE. You know it, so that you can be leading our board and not be blindly led. So let me just take a second to read this. And this is under CAE, so you can find it there. Let me see, where are we? Once a board permits public comment, well, we've established that this is a public forum, once a board permits public comments as part of board meetings, freedom of speech requires of the First Amendment apply, because the board meeting is considered a public forum. Therefore, a public forum, the board cannot pick and choose from which the speakers and the basis of their content of their speech. However, the board can limit comments to a particular topic hereby creating a limited public forum, but cannot discriminate based upon the speaker's viewpoint. So with that said, also, some boards have attempted, through their policy, to prohibit complaints against the district, or about employees stating their names publicly, but that will not hold up in the court. So you cannot prevent us publicly from speaking what we wish to speak about in a public forum. With that said, establishing that this is a public forum, and with all due respect to the police chief, I have many, you know, military employees in my own family, but it just makes no sense. It's a public forum, anybody can livestream. This is not protected by you not streaming it live. Nobody's being protected here, because the public can livestream it themselves. So it just doesn't make any sense. With that said, you know, we talk about issues of things that were considered non-credible threat, but we don't talk about the things that were threats, like the homecoming, the homecoming where an act of violence did occur. Yet the board, the superintendent, nobody addresses the parents. Now we have a dance coming up, the prom coming up, and we don't even know what extra steps or precautions had have been taken with actual acts of, where actual acts of violence have occurred. I think that needs to be addressed.
Thank you, Mrs. Kikase. Just to follow up, Mrs. Kikase, because I'm sure you and I could probably email about this, but there seems to be some confusion. In my consultations with the folks at CAE, the board policies can set limits on content, which, trust me, I'm actively trying to balance the First Amendment intent of which you speak, with the responsibilities of the board to limit defamation, libel, disbursement of character. So I just want you to know that.
I just want to ask.
This isn't really a back and forth. The, the role for, the role that CAE, the role that CAE says is that we need to try to put forth our policies in a consistent way, and we are, we are working on that. So Mrs. Ventreska, you are next.
As someone who grew up here in Brookfield, and was once so proud to raise my children here.
Excuse me, Mrs. Ventreska, could you please start with your?
Kristen Ventreska, 23, Rappahoe, I apologize. In many ways, it has become unrecognizable. The Brookfield I know and love is a town where after a macro burst wrecks through our town, neighbors are outside grilling meals for one another and for first responders, and helping to rebuild without question. It's a town where if someone in your family is sick or struggling, people will come together to support that family in any way, shape, or form. It's a town where you see neighbors and alumni from years past, year after year, at the Thanksgiving Day football game. It is a town filled with spirit, morals, and love for one another. Lately, Brookfield's taken a turn. It's a town divided, making headlines nationwide for allowing pornographic reading materials to stay in the hands of our children, for having an SRO accused of having nude photos of underage girls, for installing tampon dispensers in a boy's bathroom months before state requirement without any communication to parents prior, for having a high school principal signing his signature to only his students with he/him pronouns, for receiving countless bomb threats towards our schools, to keeping a middle school art teacher employed after going on a rant about gender identity and calling students against that theory bigots. We have videos circulating social media from our Board of Ed meetings, people around the country making Brookfield a laughingstock for what we have allowed to happen in this once small quaint town. It's embarrassing, and the hole will only grow deeper if we don't put an end to it now. We have parents desperate to find alternative schooling options, because they don't feel this town is equipped at this point to provide a morally safe and neutral environment. When parents and taxpayers start pulling their kids from public schools, which is happening, it's only a matter of time before this reflects the town as a whole. When taxpayers lose faith in the school system, guess who will be voting no when it becomes to time for proposed budget increases for the school system? When someone from out of state Googles Brookfield to relocate, you think they're gonna second guess moving here after seeing all these stories about this news in this town? It's a trickle effect, so for those of you who think it's really just about us not getting our way over a book, or any single situation, you are wrong. It all ends up at the end of the day, and ultimately, we all pay in one way or another. Many of us aren't looking for anything extreme to happen here. At the end of the day, we want our children to be sent to school knowing they are getting quality education and aren't being influenced politically or sexually by our leaders and educators. We want to know that there are in fact people and policies in place to keep these areas neutral, and not feel that when parents come to Board of Ed meetings to express our concern, it clearly holds no weight, because members have already made up their minds before we even step foot in the door. Brookfield needs a reset, and it starts at the top. And I just want to add, just real quick, because I grew up here, my mom works here, my dad's a coach here, my brother's a coach here. I protect this town as much as I can to anybody, and lately, it's just been indefensible, and it starts at the top. So truly, I just feel like the whole morale of this town at this point is in everyone here's hands, and I just pray that you guys can do right by us, because it's up to you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ventreska. All right, so that concludes public comment, and now let's move to the three main points.
So I have parent square as number one, the budget update is number two, and I'm not sure where to go with number three. So I'm asking for what you have to say. Could we speak to?
Maybe why it's not, maybe why this is not being broadcast.
That's what I was thinking, like, safety concerns, and like, addressing like, why?
Yeah.
Or announcing that the two new members of the security task force and some of the plans going forward, kind of thing, maybe? And could fit in the livestream piece under that, maybe? That make sense?
Yeah, and I'll send you like, the variety of things I've written down, and then you can add her. You can figure out. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and so upcoming events.
Sorry, I do not have any additional upcoming events from the previous two meetings.
Yeah, Ava pretty much hit them all.
Yeah.
Just a reminder to junior girls out there, wear your jackets. Okay, so for everybody who's here, we're not going to adjourn the meeting. This concludes the public portion of the meeting. We're gonna move into executive session to, well, I move that we enter into executive session to discuss strategy and negotiations as it relates to collective bargaining, draft shared services agreement with the town of Brookfield regarding the tech department, and the draft reorganization chart regarding human resources, and the board's self-evaluation. Great.
All those in favor?
All those in favor? Okay, it is unanimous, thank you so much.